Let the wishes of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Ozark City Hall. We're glad you're here for the Board of Aldermen meeting and engaging with your elected officials. Listening to perspectives of city residents, business owners, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before the meeting begins, let's review our rules of order. These ensure the meeting is orderly and efficient while allowing everyone who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. There are two opportunities for you to speak: during the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion of the meeting, and during public discussion of new bills and resolutions. During the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion, anyone who signed up at the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday before the meeting can speak to aldermen about the topic they specified. Now, in the public discussion of new bills and resolutions, that allows you to give comments for aldermen to consider before they make a decision. The consent agenda bills are not open to comment. If you want to speak about an item on the consent agenda, you must sign up by noon the Friday before the meeting. You can do that by contacting the city clerk in writing, or fill out a card in the council chambers before the meeting starts. Write down the specific bill and give the card to the city clerk before the consent agenda is set. That bill will then go to a first reading, which is open to public discussion, and anyone may speak about it. Anytime anyone is speaking, the following rules apply. First, only one person should speak at a time. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your comments until it's your turn. Second, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Third, you must first provide your name and address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. These forms are provided near the entrance. You also must state your name and address to the Board of Aldermen using the podium microphone. Fourth, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and aldermen. Finally, all speakers have five minutes to make their comments. The mayor or alderman may have additional questions for speakers after their five-minute time limit. Occasionally, the board will invite someone to make a presentation at the meeting. This is only to give information to the board about a specific topic. These presenters will have no time limit on giving their information. This meeting will be livestreamed and recorded with video and audio unless there are technical difficulties. The use of cell phones or other devices is discouraged during the meeting. Please silence your phones right now. Again, thank you for being here and engaging with the City of Ozark. The meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Aiken?
Here.
Alderman Campbell?
Here.
Alderman Galloway?
Here.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Here.
Alderman Metcalf?
Here.
Alderman Snyder?
Here.
We have six aldermen present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We only have one set of minutes tonight. It's from October the 6th, a regular session. Are there any questions about these sets of minutes? Chairman Alderman? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, on page four of the minutes, under Roman numeral three, that, three paragraphs down from that, there's a sentence that says Alderman Galloway followed up and stated he made a mindful decision and would honor it. I'll let you catch up with that.
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay. That last sentence there, the words that I said were to the effect that the board made a decision and I would honor it. And I was referring to the board decision that was made in closed session, and I would honor that. But that is different from what is stated here, that I made that decision.
Okay. City clerk, have you got that noted?
Yes, I will make that correction.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes besides this one? Can we approve the minutes as amended now, or do you want to approve the amendment? Yes, sir.
I was going to vote to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, so motion made. Okay, is your second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we approve the minutes as amended, as noted now. That was made by Alderman Campbell. It was segment Alderman Metcalf. All in favor to approve October 6, 2025, regular session minutes as amended, you so a show of hands. And that does carry. Okay. We have no ceremonial matters, but we do have three scheduled guests tonight. We're first going to begin with Chris Russell, the president and CEO of Ozark Chamber of Commerce. We have the floor.
Yes, you guys. We are getting excited about the November 22nd, the City Chamber Parade. It is the sparkle, sixty years of sparkle. We are handing out that night.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, we are here for the 60th Annual Ozark Chamber Diamond Christmas. It's the 60th year, and we have a sponsor that's going to be giving these out on the square, so we're hoping that will help make it sparkle on the square. It's going to be kind of a fun deal with those little reins. And so we are getting ready for that, guys. And a couple of small changes this year that's already been approved by the city and the county. We've had to shut down the entire square due to safety. The crowds last year were over the top, and if we had weather that is somewhat favorable...
Hey, Chris, how you turn them off?
Oh, you just push them again. Push them again. There you go. Yeah, sorry about that. But anyway, so one small change on that. So we're working on informing the businesses downtown, making sure that they're aware of that, that that Saturday, we will have to shut down the entire, all four streets. There were some safety concerns between the police and the fire last year, and we're taking some extra precautions as well to make sure that as people are going around the square, we're going to have some more barriers in place to help keep people back. So that's one of the big things. But we're still planning. You can see the big poster up there. Hayden's going to put one up. I've got some extras I'm going to leave back here if somebody's got a business that would like to put that up to help promote the event. Again, we start the parade at 5:30. One thing that we're doing for any of our sitting aldermen, if you would like to be in the parade, obviously it's free. If you want to, I think Eddie Campbell called. I think he's going to do a float. You can be in the parade. We ask that you not put "elect" or something like that. That's a different type campaign if you were campaigning. But if you're just saying, hey, I'm proud to be your alderman and you want to be in the parade, we welcome that. Just go and sign up on the community groups, and we'd love to have you guys in the parade. We want to have, right now, we have a little 54 that are registered, so that'll continue to grow as we get closer and closer. We are, it is free for chamber members to participate. If you're a non-member of the chamber and a for-profit business, there is a charge of $75. But all of our community groups in town, nonprofit groups, churches, school groups, all those are 100% free. We want this to be a community-wide event that's really celebrated here in Ozark as we offer this. What's kind of become, I think, is we looked at, I had Show Me Christian County last year, they pulled some data for us on the traffic that's coming into Ozark that's not local Ozark residences is pretty big. So it is something that attracts a lot of people, and we are excited. We'll also be on the square again. Starting about 2 o'clock, we'll have, I've got a farmer's market, kids' farmer's market coming in, which is about 30 or 40 kids and their entrepreneurial skills, so that's going to be fun. Plus, other crafters, food trucks, a few food vendors. We also try to make sure we're not, we have Lollies, and we have Iguanarohas, and we have some that are down here already. We don't want to take from them. But when you have that many people in downtown, then you have to have additional food sources. So we will have that, and then popcorn and Santa Claus and all that good stuff. So excited about that. That's coming up here in the near future. So if you have any questions, please let us know. We are still looking for additional crafters and nonprofit organizations who want to do something fun on the square that day. We're not charging for community events, and we've got some really, I think one of the churches is doing a big bouncy house, so stuff like that. So it's going to be a lot of fun leading up to the parade. And then, of course, Santa Claus will get off of the fire truck, and then he will be escorted over to the gazebo, and some kids can come in and get their pictures taken as everybody's slowly exiting the event. So it should be a lot of fun, and we're still looking for some volunteers, too. If you'd like to help us, please let us know. Okay, the other event I want to tell you about, and thank you, Maria, is the annual State of the Community address. We've changed this up. Last year, we were at the Stained Glass Theater. It was nice. It was a little crowded in there as we gathered, and then we had to move everybody into the auditorium. I met with Dr. Wilson and Eric the other day, and I think Matheny was there, Chief Matheny, and we had a conversation about how we wanted to maybe change it up, make it a little bit more formal event, and so we have. It's going to be a really neat event, and city leaders here, you are obviously free to attend. But the event is going to be December the 9th. It is going to be at the Ozark Innovation Center. And what's nice about this is we're going to be utilizing the culinary arts students at the high school to do a plated meal service. We were going to bring in the full-size jazz band, but that's about 20 people, and we think it's going to be a little too loud and a little too crowded. So we're going to try to find some high school students that maybe can do a small accompaniment as we eat our dinner. But we'll open the doors at 5:30. We really won't start until about 6:15 is when we'll do the invocation, and then we'll also do the JROTC. We'll have a nice dinner. Once everybody's seated, each entity will have its own presentation, and whatever that looks like. You have full use of all the AV equipment that the school provides, or you just want to get up there and have a conversation about what's going on within the city, or the fire, or county, or the schools, of course. And then, of course, we'll give a Chamber of Commerce update as well. So then that will hopefully last about an hour or so, and then maybe be done by a little bit around 8:00 or 8:15. One of the other things that will be going on that evening that we'll get to experience is the Kite students, or it's a Kite program, it's the gifted program through the schools, they're going to be having a big display that night of all of their work, and so that'll be on hand, and the students will be there until about 6:30. So if you want to get there early and walk around the schools and ask the students about their projects and some of their different things, that'll be part of the experience. Obviously, if you are tight on time and just get there by 6:00, that's fine, too, but that'll be another part of the way we can showcase our community through our schools, districts, and school system. So that's a lot of fun. So that's December the 9th, and I'll get with Marie and Eric, and we'll find out about how many tables you guys need to reserve. We have room for about 126. I don't anticipate we selling that out. General public can attend, anybody. We're not limiting this to just members of the chamber. So anybody who would want to attend that event can go to ozarkchamber.com, and for $20, you can get your ticket. So that way, we can allow other people in the community to experience the state of the country.
Appreciate Chris. I'm glad you're update.
I'm sorry?
We have a very tight agenda tonight.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's it. And then just don't forget, sorry. I haven't been here in a couple of months, so I was...
I know, but we've got a really...
Yeah, you're fine. And then just a reminder that the Chamber luncheon is this coming Thursday. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we want to welcome Johnny Williams, who's the Western County Commissioner, to the floor.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Johnny Williams, the Western County Commissioner. I wanted to come to you guys tonight and talk a little bit about our November 4th ballot issue with the use tax. So use tax, what the use tax is, is the county's asking for 1.5% on any purchases that you make online from out of state, and that's what the use tax is. So as we dove into that, a little bit of the history of the use tax, the state of Missouri, a long time ago, when people first started purchasing online, the state of Missouri decided and understood, you know, the importance of what that was going to be income-wise that the state could lose. So the state put it upon themselves to pass the use tax automatically without going to vote to make people pay the state portion of that tax. Then they dumped the rest of it to the municipalities and the counties to then have to put it to the vote of the people in order to pass that. So as far as our county, the western side, I know NIXA, Clever, Highlandville Billings, and Fremont Hills have all passed that for their city portion of it. And so what we're trying to do is pass the county portion of that. So as the commission got together, we started talking about it and trying to put a plan together of exactly what that would look like. And so we had a public work study meeting where we discussed that if we're able to pass the use tax, we're going to roll the county's property tax and personal property and residential tax back from 0.44% to 0.01%. So that would be about a 77% property tax cut to the residents of Christian County from the Christian County portion, because that's all we have. We don't have the schools or any of those other things. So it was kind of a way for us to give back in the same portion as we move forward. What we've started to see in the county is our sales tax is starting to become really, really flat. Year-to-date from last year, currently right now, we're at 0.26%, so just barely over a quarter of 1% up from last year. So if you understand inflation and how things are going up, you know what that means for to us. So this is exactly what we have going. It's on November 4th ballot, and I wanted to leave a little bit of time for questions, because I know you guys have a tight budget time. One other statement on that, a lot of the questions have been, well, what stops you from just turning around and rolling the levy right back up once it's passed? The way the Hancock Amendment is written and the way it works is the only, we can roll the levy back any amount we want, whenever we want, but we cannot roll it back up. It's a formula that's based, that the auditor does, that tells us what can happen. The last three years, the commission has voted to not raise the levy, and this year, we could have raised it 25% because that's how far we are behind on that sales tax revenue of it falling. But we just still decided not to, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We'd much rather it be based on something by consumption than just to tax everybody, you know, through that. So we're trying to find a way to be able to do that, and this is the best plan that we had moving forward. So any questions for me?
Yes, Alderman Galloway.
Yeah, I know the administration can't take positions on electoral issues, but certainly as an elected leader, I can. I completely support the county's efforts. We're a good partner for the county. The way I look at taxes is you have to have them. When you have them, they need to be fair. They need to be fairly applied. And the way it is right now, you have some companies that are not being taxed, really, even though I know it's the consumer that's doing it. And those are the companies that are not in Missouri, not in Ozark, not in Christian County. They are selling to us. And those companies that do business here, employ people here, are part of the community, they have to charge the customers that tax, and that's not fair, and that's why I support it.
That's exactly right. You're right. You know, as it goes forward, you know, a lot of our local businesses, like you said, when we walk into our local businesses here, people have to pay that tax there. But we can order something from Chicago, Illinois, and they don't have to charge the tax. It's already hard enough to compete with the online services. So leveling that playing field is a very big factor in that.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, guys, for your time. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you being here. Our next guest is Buddy Huggins. You have the floor, sir.
Hello. I'm once again in front of you. We're going to touch on a couple of quick things. The comprehensive annual report form for the transparency of what's going on with the year 23 and the year 24. 23 is missing eight pages, and 24 has yet to be updated. The timeline for the state to receive it has already passed for 24. So not only are we in compliance, out of compliance with 23, we're out of compliance with 24. Now, that can be rectified. Why it matters is because the types of grants and road services are actually tied to that. If you get in trouble, it puts you in a bad zone. We want to keep it in a good zone. And the other part of what that means is, I had a good question in there. I can't see it. Okay, just a simple question. Y'all requested that we was going to have a meeting now, so I'm still looking for a date and a phone call, and the courtesy of sitting down and talking about the comprehensive annual report form.
Mr. Huggins, I think we've been trying to reach you. I think Chandra...
I tested my phone today. It works.
Yeah, okay. I believe she's emailed, and she's left a voice message for you. So we're ready to meet with you when your schedule is available. So if you could let Chandra know, we would appreciate it, and we'll set that time up, and we'll answer all the questions that you have, sir.
I've never owned a cellphone, never had a cellphone contract, but I do have a computer, and I do make YouTube videos, and I am a YouTuber. But the next part I'm going to talk about real quick, because I ain't got much time, the police accessibility to scanner communications, it falls under the Missouri Sunshine RSMO Chapter 610. The public records are included for the public communications of hearing these calls unless it's exempt by security. Otherwise, it needs to be made available. All that's been cut. The county cut theirs, and now the city has cut theirs. This has been happening for over a period of years. I believe that with my intel information, that Palantir is backed and behind this, not only in this community, but in communities all across this country. Now, I noticed that we got the flock cameras. I think we got 12 of them. Well, there's a case that's going to go all the way to Supreme Court here pretty soon. It's in the largest naval base on the East Coast, and these guys, we don't, I don't like nobody reading my tag and knowing my heat map of where I'm going. I'm going to get me some cookies at McDonald's. But every time, you're dogging me. You're checking me. And that's what these guys up there in Norfolk, Virginia are getting upset about. And I'm going to tell you right now that eventually those cameras are going to come down. They're illegal. And you asked a good question, young fellow. You said, will we have to pay for that? Will we lose that money? Over $200,000 and counting. Yeah, you lose it. You even got to keep the cameras. You can't just give them back at preparatory. You can't sell them. So anytime you're making deals with the devil, Palantir has not got our interest at heart. So whatever we doing with our scanners, we used to could do it with, it's a funny word, but it stands for broadcastify, broadcastify. It used to be, go there, boom, you could hear everything you want to hear. And you had scanners that we actually had in our pockets. All that don't work no more. And by law, it's supposed to work. Now, until it gets fixed, until it gets working, I'd be more than happy to get with the chief of police and the sheriff, and we'll come up with a way to fix it. It can be fixed. It's broke because somebody thought that they didn't have to listen to what the law of Missouri says. We have a right to hear these. They run up and down Jackson Street. I swear to God, you can hear four or five of them running at the same time. I'd like to go to the scanner and just see what's going on. It's for our safety. It's for our benefit. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, in our order of business, there's nothing on the consent agenda item of second reading. So therefore, we're going to be moving to the first reading of bills tonight and resolutions. And these are former public hearing bills, and therefore, the first bill is bill item number 3694.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3694 on its first reading by title and brief description only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is that we place on its first reading by title only, bill number 3694. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was segment Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting with motion to discuss bill number 3694, do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
In ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, amending the zoning code an official map by changing the zoning classification of approximately 13 acres abutted by East Hartley Road to the north and south of East Elementary School.
Now, the public hearing for bill number 3694 is now open. We'll begin with staff comments after we give up Director Randall Whitman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Yes, this is a rezoning request to rezone 13 acres on East Hartley from a single-family zoning district R1A to another more single-family district RSF1. This is located on the south side of East Elementary, again, on Hartley Street. So these are the typical guiding factors the Planning, Zoning Commission consider when a property is proposed or an application is made to rezone. So we look at the existing zoning classification. Obviously, we look at the zoning of the existing properties and the use of that area immediately around the property, how it relates to the city's comprehensive plan, the recommendations from the comprehensive plan, as well as trends of development in the general area and other recommendations that kind of follow a particular proposed zoning. Lastly, we look at the suitability of the property for the proposed zoning, as well as the uses that are allowed in that zoning district. So in this case, the property to the north is owned agriculture. That includes the school. The property to the east is residential, suburban residential. It's located outside the city. The property to the south is non-residential. There's a storage facility there, part of its own industrial, part of its, two vacant properties are zoned general commercial. And a little bit of the property to the west is zoned to R1A as well, and that's single family. It's in a state district. So some guidance from the comprehensive plan. Generally speaking, the staff doesn't have any issues. There's nothing identified that the zoning will create friction or anything that is an immediate problem. Single family is compatible with the property to the east and west. It's compatible with the school to the north. Any friction that's created from the properties to the south, meaning the commercial and the storage and manufacturing, can be mitigated with buffer yards at the time of development. And city services are available. The comprehensive plan supports infill development in areas like this. Again, utilities are available, the extension of which would be the responsibility at the time of the property's developed by the developer. Any traffic impact will be reviewed when a preliminary plat submitted, and analysis will be submitted in conjunction with that, as well as a stormwater analysis as well. East Hartley is designated as a primary collector, which is, there wouldn't be any direct access from any lots platted off this, but there would have streets that would access, and that would be evaluated at the time of this traffic study as well. I went through that pretty fast. I think if my notes are right, there was four representative at the neighborhood meeting, a little bit of opposition. Nobody spoke against this at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they did recommend approval, and staff concurs. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, is anyone here from the public who wish to speak for bill 3694? If you would speak for bill 3694, this is your time.
Hello. My name's John Sayer. I'm 1301 East Daniel Street here in Ozark. I am representing the owner of the property tonight, Mr. Lynda Williams. He apologized he couldn't be here. He is at a visitation. So keep our prayers with him. Just wanted to come up and say, of course, I am for this, and wanted to make myself available to answer any questions that you might have about the rezoning.
I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else here who would speak for bill 3694? Okay. Anyone here who's opposed or against bill 3694? This is your time to come to the mic.
Monty Horning, 1509 East Hartley.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't feel upping... I don't feel upping the residential status can be supported by the infrastructure that we have along there. All of you have seen me before, talking about the issues with, uh, the thoroughfare where Hartley turns and comes down 11th Street to Robertson and all that. Good work on working toward getting Robertson upgraded. Unfortunately, Hartley is an OSRD road, and they have recently went out there, and they've restriped the road. If you go drive that road, you will find they have marked that as a passing zone, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and it's marked as a passing zone from a couple hundred feet up from the four-way all the way out past the elementary school, already making it incredibly unsafe. My wife has visited with OSRD and is trying to get them to correct that, they're supposed to be looking into it, but, any addition of traffic on that road is going to be a tragedy for the people living along that road. My daughter and son-in-law were living with us recently, and the son-in-law's dog got hit when he got loose during thunderstorm. It'll be a kid next. Uh, I don't feel anything other than the standard residential zoning for that is appropriate, given the road condition and quality out through there. As was noted, I didn't hear anything about any neighborhood meeting, maybe I'm not close enough to that to have gotten notice of that, but, uh, there's no sidewalks along Hartley from the four-way stop out to about two blocks west of the elementary school. So you have pedestrians frequently on the road, as I've said, speeding continues to be a problem. We contact the police department, they come out, they'll set up the radar, they'll set somebody out there, they'll write a bunch of tickets, it quiets down for about two weeks, and then, people being people, start driving 45 and 50 miles an hour through there. The increase of traffic that would come from upping this zoning would be, would impact greatly the danger and the quality, uh, of pedestrians along that, that street. It's not very well lit, so, uh, I don't think any change from the current status of single-family would be a good idea. So that's really all I, I have to say, I, uh, would like for you guys to consider this, if you go out there, if nothing else, go out there, you can park in my driveway, sit there and watch the traffic. Watch the pedestrians that come up and down the road, there's kids on bicycles, probably going out to the, the school, and any increase of traffic would be very detrimental to their safety. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Sherri Horning, and I live, also live at 1509 East Hartley, and to add to what my husband had to say, um, literally, uh, there are times, usually in the morning, because of the school buses, the traffic is already backed up on Hartley, people are sitting waiting for sometimes five minutes at a time. Um, I have no problem with people having housing, I have no problem with houses being built. The issue is adding more traffic to Hartley, which is already overloaded, uh, there are no sidewalks for a lot of it, there are no streetlights for a lot of it, and the pedestrian traffic is very heavy in that area, because there is a partial part of it that's very flat. So people will ride bikes, motorcycles, scooters, walking, uh, you name it, walking their dogs, et cetera. And we also have a lot of wildlife in the area, uh, one day we woke up to a dead deer in our front yard, uh, because people have no clue how to drive 25 miles an hour on Hartley Road, it's a fact. And we're just very concerned, we have a lot of children in the area, that's where we have a lot of school buses stopping, picking up children, dropping them off. Um, I could walk to Ozark Elementary from my house very easily, and it's an extremely high-traffic area, it's a very heavily-traveled road, it's a main artery for east to west, going to Sparta, and everything's south. So I, I ask you to please consider not making this, uh, traffic disaster even worse than what it is, because that's exactly what's going to happen. If you guys decide that this is something that you want to see done, please consider what's gonna happen to people that live there, uh, because it, it's not gonna be a good situation. So please consider voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would speak against this bill? This is your time. Okay. I'm not seeing movement. Okay, the public hearing for Bill number 3694 is now closed, and it would now be held over to a future meeting. We're now gonna draw attention to the next bill, which is Bill number 3695.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill number 3695 on its first reading by title and a brief description only.
Do we have a second? Okay. Okay. The motion is that we place Bill number 3695 on its first reading by title only, that motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, it was segment Alderman Campbell. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3695, do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance amending the corporate boundaries of the city of Ozark, Missouri, by annexing an approximately 229-acre parcel of real property bordered by North Farmer Branch Road and Blue Stem Road.
Okay. Now, the public hearing for Bill number 3695 is now open, and we'll begin with the staff comments from Director Randall Whitman.
This is, uh, the first of the next three agenda items, all address the Maribella development, uh, it's kind of a three-act play, this is the first act, annexation, second being zoning, and then the third being plating. Uh, so, this is, um, this is 229 acres, uh, on Farmer's Branch, as you said, and Blue Stem Road to the east. These are the standards and Missouri state statutes, uh, establish that cities need to consider guiding factors for annexation of properties, uh, so we'll go with these quickly. Um, the property is not currently in the city limits, it is contiguous, uh, to the city limits to the south, uh, the property's in good standing with the state of Missouri. Um, it is located in Tier One of the city's urban service area, um, which means it's, uh, within the city's jurisdiction to make planning decisions for, and to consider annexation, zoning, and development, and provide utilities, uh, and in that case, it is within 300 feet of the city of Ozark's, uh, water sewer and other infrastructure. Uh, so the surrounding zoning, uh, I may go over this multiple times, forgive me, um, property to the north, kind of the northwest is C2, it's general commercial, that's close to the quarry, uh, the property's further east, uh, zoned agriculture, some residential, as well as the property further to the east, uh, and the property to the south is, uh, there's a little bit that is C2, otherwise, it's multifamily, zoned R4. Uh, so the comprehensive plan, um, it does support infill of development on the city's edge and places within the city, uh, this property is obviously on the edge of the city, there, we're considering some annexations close to it, so it'll make it more contiguous. Um, you can see here from the map, this is, uh, kind of a clip from the city's comprehensive plan that recommends a future use. Land use there, there in that pink color is mixed use, there in yellow is recommended for single-family. Uh, planned development, um, is proposed here, and that allows for a mixture of uses. Planned developments are typically appropriate on higher-classification streets, in this case, uh, Farmer's Branch is a primary arterio, the other streets to the east are collector streets, um, and it's a kind of appropriate, given the proximity to the residential and the church and other things like that to the south. Uh, staff does not identify any issues with respect to zoning or friction from the surrounding uses, um, any issues that, that do come up, uh, from, possibly from the north or within the development, will be kind of mitigated with buffer yards and things like that. We'll talk about that next, on the next agenda item. Um, I, I don't remember exactly if there was any opposition to this with the neighborhood meeting, uh, there was nothing, that, nobody spoke against this at the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, on September 20 staff, on 22nd, uh, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission both recommend approval. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Yes, um, Hutcherson.
Just a couple of questions from the neighborhood meeting summary. Um, attendees ask about the fence staying up on the north and east boundaries of the property, can you give us some sense of what that's about?
The north and east boundaries, um, I would say most likely that fence is probably within, uh, what will be a buffer yard when it's developed, when that phase of the development is developed, and we'll, and we'll probably be able to touch on that more, but it will probably be removed, I would guess.
Oh, and a different, something-
Yeah, probably be landscaped and cleared, or, uh, there'll be utility usements and sidewalks on the perimeter, so it'll most likely disappear. Now, that is if it's within the development. Some of that property is, is a common property line, it's not adjacent to a street, so-
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah. Now, at this time, is anyone here who wish to speak for Bill number 3695? If you would speak for this bill, this is your time. Okay, I'm not seeing movement. Is anyone here who is against Bill 3695? You, you have the floor. Okay, I'm not seeing movement, therefore, the public hearing for Bill number 3695 is now closed, and will be held, held over to a future meeting. Now, we're gonna draw attention to Bill number 3696.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill number 3696 on its first reading by title and a brief description only.
Is there a second? Okay. Okay. The motion is we place Bill number 3696 on its first reading by title only, that motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, it was segment Alderman Campbell. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3696, do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally bordered by North Farmer Branch Road on the west and Blue Stem Road on the east, containing approximately 229 acres to a planned unit development.
Okay. Now, the public hearing for Bill number 3696 is now open, and we'll have, ask Director Randall Whitman to come back.
Okay, so I said there's like three acts to this, there's three phases, this is the second part of that, it's the zoning, uh, in this case, uh, the applicants, property owners have asked the cit, asked the city to, uh, rezone this property to a planned unit development, they like to say pud, I don't think that's probably very cool, I'm not gonna do that. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about what a planned development is, the batteries are going out, or something there, something, I'm sorry. There we go. Uh, it's the same property we just talked about being annexed, uh, it's directly east of, uh, the James River Assembly Church, across from Farmer's Branch. Um, a little bit about, uh, what a planned development is, uh, this is a zoning district, just like residential, manufacturing, or commercial in the city zoning code, uh, particularly the city zoning code, uh, requires at least two different uses or two different zoning districts be represented to kind of qualify for a planned development, um, but it does allow the combination of those zoning districts or uses that are compatible, and it allows some opportunities to be flexible on how they are integrated together within a project, um, and it does give some opportunities to expedite development. In this case, there's, it's a large tract of land, um, a lot of different proposed uses, a lot of roads, and a lot of, uh, things going on, and the city has the opportunity to review that at one time, think about how the uses, how the roads, how the amenities, and how the impact onsite and offsite can kind of be looked at kind of in concert together, so, uh, it does give us the opportunity to look at how we can preserve trees and natural vegetation and natural areas, how can, we can work around floodplains and drainage areas, um, how we can make greater efficient use of the real estate and the land, um, and how we can kind of deal with existing conditions, again, offsite and offsite, and kind of mitigate some of that friction. I will say, traditionally planned developments, I skipped over this, uh, usually inspire the opportunity to have more creativity than what our traditional zoning allows, and we otherwise say this, this is a project, if it wasn't for the planned development process, some of these things wouldn't be possible, so I think we'll be able to make that case tonight. Uh, so again, the planned development standards allow for two different uses, uh, overall, the density cannot exceed, that was, that which would, would be allowed if it were just one district, so if hypothetically, if this was all single-family, would we calculate what that density is, and they couldn't exceed that density for the overall project. In this case, as you'll see, there's multiple land uses represented, everything from commercial to multifamily to several densities of single-family, uh, and, uh, more diverse housing, so, overall, we wouldn't want to exceed that density in the, in the project, doesn't. Uh, and again, it does allow us to exchange from some development space for preservation of open areas and floodplains and low-lying areas and other natural features. Sorry. Uh, so, a big part of this is a, is the concept plan, uh, in this case, there's a 38-page narrative, it includes a lot of exhibits and illustrations, they talk about everything from the uses to how many lots, the layout, the streets, all of those things, this is a list of stuff that's covered in the concept plan, uh, it also, it very specifically lays out the setbacks, the lot sizes, the height of structures, design standards, uh, it even includes the covenants and the restrictions the developer plans to adopt, um, as part of the development. Um, it identifies the phasing, not just of each, each development portion, but the streets that serve it, um, it tells us what street classification served the lots, uh, it talks about the public and private improvements, um, it gives great detail about the amenities that are proposed, when they're gonna be constructed, uh, gets into detail about the landscaping, um, the trails, this particular project even speaks to the type of signage that the developer will propose along the streets in terms of street signs that are kind of themed, um, talks, it gives us some indications what this particular outdoor lighting is going to be, um, and then we get an opportunity to see what, how it's going to be platted down the road when we connect the zoning to the actual subdivision of the property. This concept plan is part of the ordinance, should this zoning be approved, that concept plan goes with the land and it becomes just an extension of the city zoning code, and the developer must follow the specifications or the details within that, so, as it develops, we will refer back to it, and we will ask you to refer back to it, and that's what will guide the development, uh, or the plating of this property, so. Uh, so once again, these are the factors, just like the previous zoning case, uh, we asked the Planning and Zoning Commission staff and you all to consider the existing zoning of the property, existing use, that of the surrounding properties, as well as the goals and the recommendations from the city's comprehensive plan, we look at trends of development in the area, what's happening around it, uh, any issues that we need to consider, any friction, any, uh, thing that would change the dynamics of what is proposed, uh, and is this zoning, of course, is it suitable for this property? Uh, in this prop, in this case, I'll say this again, the property to the north, kind of the northwest, uh, is zoned C2, part of it, a little bit off the site there, is zoned industrial to the west, uh, the rest of it is zoned agriculture, kind of a mix of agriculture, residential to the east and north, a little bit to the southeast there, uh, there's some R3 property, multifamily, and, uh, there's just a little bit of C2 that kind of, just kind of pokes there at the southern side. Uh, from an infrastructure and kind of a zoning perspective, uh, water and sewer is available, it's adjacent to the site, uh, a preliminary stormwater and traffic analysis has been completed, the city's reviewed it, we've shared that with other jurisdictions, the road district, uh, all have reviewed it and they've approved it, uh, and that will come into play as we review the preliminary plat as well. Uh, Farmer's Branch there to the, on the west side is designated as a primary arterio, uh, the other two roads, Southern View and Blue Stem, are designated as collector streets, and all of these roadways would support, uh, a mixed-use development, a residential-commercial development, there will be no exterior access to any of the property to those roads, only interior streets will access them. Uh, so I want to mention too, that while the zoning code doesn't require a buffer yard, per se, for a planned development, we look at the uses- per se for a planned development, we look at the uses within the planned development, how that impacts other uses within the project and those on the outside of the, or outside of the development window. In this case, the developer's proposed, whether he needs to or not, to build a buffer yard around the entire perimeter of the project. So that will deal with any perceived or actual mitigate, it'll mitigate any friction from the properties around it. And it'll also give us an opportunity to save existing trees and kind of protect the flood plain on the south side. Which, by the way, all the pictures in this are laid plan to the west is north, or excuse me, to the north is north, to the top is north, and to the west is south. It feels like it needs to be rotated, but that's actually planned, that's correct. I probably said way too much there. Other guidance from the comprehensive plan speaks to what's the future recommended use. The area in the, kind of that pink color is mixed-use, allows everything commercial to multifamily and single family. It can be mixture of uses, it could be mixed building types. The yellow is single family. Comprehensive plan supports diversified housing throughout the city, and they do that through lot sizes, through setbacks, building types, and different configurations. This comprehensive plan encourages preservation of open space, natural areas, and of course, areas that are prone to flooding, and areas kind of the buffers between them, adjacent to the flood plains. The city's comprehensive plan also supports the expansion of trail systems, not just to a public system, but within a minute, within a development, provide access and benefits to homeowners. There is also a reference in the comprehensive plan encouraging the city to create homeowners' association and opportunities for residents to have a role in their own governance of their own development, and this particular project will have that very thing. The homeowners' association from Maribella will be in charge of maintaining their detention bonds, all of their amenities, all of the trails, and things like that. And there's quite a bit of language in the concept plan that speaks to that. So, a little bit of the, I guess you could say, the quantitative side of this proposal. Forty-eight acres, or 21% of this is set aside or is used to preserve open space, landscaping, and amenities. That could include the area around the flood plains and things like that. 6% is dedicated to infrastructure, 4% is dedicated to commercial development, about 10 acres. There's two particular lots or tracks that will be dedicated to commercial use. The majority of it, about 70%, or 158 acres, is designated, designated for residential housing. Overall, at this time, based on the preliminary proposal, there's about close to 800 dwelling units proposed. And I say that because there is some opportunities for flexibility within the multifamily. They don't know exactly how many dwelling units will be constructed on the multifamily or some of the other mixed residential tracks. So it could, it could fluctuate a little bit, but overall, at this time, it's proposed to have about 800 dwelling units. The majority of those will be single family. So, when I say that, the, three of those particular lots allow a little bit higher density. If we look at what the potential development could be at an extreme level, it could, it could go up as high as 850 dwelling units. But at this point, when we look at the preliminary plat, you'll see that it's proposed somewhere around that 800 mark. There are three, there are three single-family lot sizes proposed. They've came up with their own names. There's a community lot size that has a minimum of 5,000 square feet, kind of a mid-range, they call it a standard lot, 8,000, almost 9,000 square feet. And then estate lots, they're, the minimum lot size they establish is 8,000 feet, but when we look at the plat, you'll see that the majority of them are 10,000 or 11,000 square foot, so much, much bigger. And again, these are just the minimums, and this is what's established in the concept plan. I spoke about the mixed-use and multifamily uses in those two parcels. They allow everything from high-density to medium-density, duplexes, patio homes, townhomes. The minimum lot size for the medium and high-density is 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So again, we'll, when we get to the preliminary plat, we'll be able to see a little bit more detail about how it's proposed and laid out. There's two commercial lots, parcels three and four. They propose, it's basically general commercial, and between the developer and staff, we've pared it down to this list of what we would characterize as neighborhood commercial uses. I did fit this on the slide, so there's a little bit, there's some things missing, but generally speaking, this is the, this is the list of proposed uses. Sign it, kind of some characteristics of this, you'll notice restaurants are allowed in, allowed, dine-in only, no drive-through restaurants. There are, it doesn't reference drive-throughs for the bank or the banking institution, but that would be allowed. But typical neighborhood commercial opportunities for small restaurants, coffee shops, that type of thing, retail, daycare, things that would support this kind of development. The comprehensive plan makes recommendations, generally speaking, it supports the idea of residential development, again, infill on the city's edge and throughout the city, but it does speak the need to have infrastructure and amenities to provide or serve that, the development itself. In this case, they've proposed quite an extensive amenity package, pools, trails, and that type of thing, and the developer's going to speak more to that. Staff doesn't recognize any issues with the, with the zoning. We have spent a lot of time working with them to craft the concept plan and refine the language in it. The, the buffer yards are proposed to kind of mitigate some of those issues. Setbacks and things have been reduced to, again, kind of make some flexibility and preserve as much of the natural areas as possible, and all those things align with the comprehensive plan, and we're very supportive of that. I'll step away for a minute and let the developer speak, but other than that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this in September. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions now or after Michael speaks.
Alm Gaddaway has a question for you.
Sure.
A comment before I ask a couple of questions, so the questions don't get misconstrued. I know the people behind this development have been interested in something innovative, and that's what's proposed before us, and it's taken a while, I gather, for them to put something together that works financially for them and is still innovative. My question is dealing with how the PUD works as it relates to trails. So on page nine of the packet, talks, there's a section 1.10 Trails. And it says, "See Exhibit I." The sentence there says, "Trails within the Maribella development will be constructed in coordination with adjacent parcels and completed prior to the final plating of the phase in which they are located." So I, I read that, of course, that makes sense to me. You have to obviously coordinate the trails with different parcels, and you need some flexibility there. Then I went to the next page. 1.1 amenities, which also references, the next page is page 10, references Exhibit I and Exhibit I-1. And then there are bullet-pointed a number of amenities, I noticed. Pickleball courts, so I'll make friends with somebody who lives there and play on their courts with them. But also, it's down the list, second from the bottom, trailhead for development of a trail system. That's the second from, bullet point from the bottom. So then, the sentence, or the paragraph that begins where, after the bullet point ends, again, on page 10, "Maribella has a desire to go beyond minimum required amenities. Throughout the development, see Exhibits I and I-1 for the location and placement of additional amenities, and those amenities will be, that will be available include 3.8 miles of private trail system and a .5-mile public trail system." So, my question, I just want to make sure I'm reading how this works together. I did look over the exhibits too. It seemed to me that what's required is a trailhead under the PUD, but it seems discretionary for the 3.8 miles and private trail and the .5-mile spur for the public trail system. Am I reading that correctly, or?
The way I read it, it says, the last sentence, "Those amenities that will be available include," I take it to mean those things will be part of the project. Their exact location may be a little bit undetermined, but...
Okay. So the way the, the way the city reads it is, the 3.8 miles trails and .5 is mandatory under the PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, there's a series of, I think Michael's got some exhibits to this, but I'll try to answer that question. There are trails proposed throughout the project internal, and those will be private trails available and accessible only to residents of Maribella. The trailhead that it speaks of is probably referenced for that system, and there will probably be a portion or a part of the amenity, you know, whether it's a pool or a gazebo or the other things that are, and he can qualify that. The rest of that, the half-mile, is the trail on the south side of the development, and that will be a public part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Alm Hutcheson?
A PUD is kind of like a jigsaw puzzle, isn't it? Putting all the pieces together and making sense of it, and this is a very large piece of property. I think the last PUD that was, has been, that I know of, that has been reviewed has been, was Finley Farms, and that wasn't nearly as complicated as this at the time. So I really appreciate the detail, the attention to detail of both the developer and our staff in reviewing it, and all the time commitment that it took to work on this and make it come out like it is. It's easy to read, easy to make sense of. I appreciate the dark sky design standards, and that that's part of this, and also the details of how, who's going to maintenance, provide maintenance. It's very specific for the lighting and the trails and the green spaces, and so, those are those kind of good fences that make good neighbors between a developer and the city. I guess one of my concerns has always been the balance of rental and homeownership within it, not just this development, but all the developments that are going into the city. I think we're at a real healthy balance right now, and I don't want to see that become overbalanced with rentals. So, I looked at the glossary of the definitions of the different kinds of housing, and it does say, it doesn't really say whether the duplexes and the patio homes are going to be owned or rented, but it does say the townhouses, they can be sold as condominiums. That's not real definitive, but it says they can, which would be allowed. These, all three of these could be either ownership or rentals, and that would be my only concern that I see in this, is it doesn't really have a balance that we can count on that is firm. And so, as we go forward, I don't know if it's possible, but I would certainly encourage their homeowners' association, if this doesn't become defined, better defined, that the homeowners' association will have within its covenants whether people who buy these can rent them, or if they are for them to live in as owners. Or a certain percentage, I know a lot of HOAs do that, where a certain, only a certain up to a certain percentage can be used as stretchers. And to stabilize that community, they have that guideline. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. If you have anything.
Well, I think you're reading it correctly. This document doesn't specify whether it's to be homeownership or a rental property, and I don't think that's something the city can regulate. They, they may very well have the ability to do that as an association. The developer has a lot of control over that, can stipulate that when whoever buys the property and any future developers. I, I do think that, and Michael will definitely speak more towards that, it's nice that I can just blame, ask him to field that question. But I do know, this was written by and large to be an opportunity for people to progress through life in the same project where they live in a smaller, single-family house, they get a family and they move up larger home, and as they need to downsize, they can move to something within their, closer to their existing friends and family, into something that they can, whether they want to own or rent during whatever stage of their life. And this is a good proj, this project kind of is a good representation of how lives change and people's needs change as well. So I think, I didn't answer your question, but I gave you something to think about, right?
Anyone else? Did you say the developer wanted to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's, he pretty much has to now, doesn't he?
Right now, there's no more question from the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, I guess my question, does the developer wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. I thought that's what, sorry, the director said, he was...
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I was following over, I didn't want to be too... No, thank you. And Randall, thank you for all your information, and I'll do my very best not to duplicate what he's already discussed and, and items that, that everyone's invited me to here before to speak about. So I'll just try to hit some of the points that, that weren't covered, and then try to leave capacity to answer whatever questions you folks may have. I did want to reiterate on this project that the current owners are still... Oh, gotcha. Thank you. The current owners are the Faria family, Stephen Conny Faria. They are local business owners in southwest Missouri. They still own the project and have intentions to owning this project until we can see it through to the end. I represent them as their chief financial officer. They have a portfolio of companies in different investment projects, obviously Maribella being one of those. And so, the two of them and, and our team will be very heavily involved and intimate with this project from the beginning until the end. We're expecting this to take anywhere from five to 10 years. We're hoping really five to seven years, but it may take a little bit longer, and we, we plan on staying through it all the way to the end. Randall had made specific points about the number of dwelling units that are in this project, and I just wanted to bring to the table that when this project was introduced to the city, probably now at this point, four to five years ago, the density of this project was heavier than what it is now. We've actually, with this current design, taken out over 100 dwelling units, mostly focused on the residential units that have been taken out. And that was really just taking feedback from the community, the, you know, administration team, and then also just working with Public Works and OSRD on what the infrastructure constraints were on the original design of the project, just having capacity issues with wastewater and stormwater, and then also the traffic on the roads, specifically Farmer's Branch to the west of the development. We are currently looking at taking this down in about 18 phases, with multiple phases at a time. See if I can... Those 18 phases right there. And in working with all of our vertical build partners on this project, the path of least resistance, or the most optimal way to attack this from everybody's standpoint, is to work from west to east. And so, our goal is to start with the entry-exit there on Farmer's Branch, and then work our way to the east throughout this development, with obviously the, the ending of the development being over against Blue Stem on the far east. I do want to point out that the amenity package that is very involved in the PUD that includes the pool and the splash pad and all of the courts would be right here in Phase Four. So the goal would be to work on, again, coming off this entry-exit, start on Phase One, go into Phase Two, and we more than likely would want to do this phase right here. I know this says three and this five, but right now, there's some planning going on internally that we may swap those phases, and then come into Phase Four right here. And that would allow this road corridor to be built, and then also this road corridor right here that would give us the second entry-exit into the development for emergency management purposes, obviously construction and just different traffic coming in and out of the development. But it would also open up these commercial and multifamily spaces right here as well, because once we drop in the roads and the infrastructure, it really wouldn't take much more to allow these... allow these, uh, these sections here, uh, to open up and be ready to go. And then like, as I mentioned before, we would just gradually work in these phases, um, towards the east. Um, those first three, uh, phases right here and this one right here would all be res, a single-family residential, um, which would allow us to get enough, uh, residents in the community to justify, uh, beginning to put in this amenity park right here. Um, as Randall had mentioned, and something that we emphasize, um, in the communications to everybody is trying to build a community within a community and trying to go, um, a little bit up beyond what the minimal standards are for building this development. And one of those areas that we have tried to do that is in the pool. So based on the current building code, um, because we're going over 75 dwelling units, it kicks in us having to build a community pool. And right now, based on the math, um, we are planning on building a 6,000 surface square feet pool, um, for the residents. On top of that, building a 400, uh, square foot splash pad. Uh, the splash pad is something that we put in our resorts and just the feedback that we get from families and especially the kids that participate. We think that'll be, um, a really good benefit to the community. Um, basketball courts, pickleball courts, sand volleyball, uh, a 2,400 foot, uh, clubhouse that has separate men's and women's bathrooms that also has a community room for people to have birthdays or meetings or whatever it is that they want to have. Um, and so just to kind of get a, a little bit of a visual of what we're trying to do with that amenity park in that pool area would be, um, hopefully what you guys see on your screen right there. Um, with the, the high-end landscaping rock, the waterfall effect, um, the additional landscaping and vegetation design around that. So a, a product that we try to use as much as we possibly can in our resorts is a, an obsidian rock for a landscaping feature, um, that has a lot better eye appeal and quality to it versus just mulch or rubber chips or something like that. It really makes the, um, the venue and just the overall atmosphere, um, of it pop. And so, um, we feel like a development this size justifies an amenity park of a higher quality. And we think that, again, going back to that community within a community, this is a way for us to hold residents inside that community in their leisure time. Just to kind of, uh, again, uh, recap a little bit on the residential units, um, that we're looking to build in this development, um, is really anywhere from about a 2,200 square foot to a 3,200 square foot floor plan, um, with the exterior, uh, materials on these homes being, uh, heavily dominated in like a brick or stone or a high-quality exterior. Our goal for this is not to just come in here and build the homes, but we really have a desire that 10 years from now that people look at this development and it holds eye appeal and it holds quality and allows people to stay in this community in different phases of their life. As Randall mentioned, we have a lot of different options from, you know, I use the term starter home. I think that's changed for a lot of people, just not only in price, but just in definition over, you know, last five to eight years. But the idea is to have an entry level home that still has a very high quality appeal to it. But then, uh, for that same family, as they grow, to work into a larger square foot, um, home, um, through the eastern part of our development, all the way into if they wanted a custom home up into our estate lots. With that whole idea of just a family staying within community and maybe even throughout there, they decide to move into some of the multifamily units. Um, I did mention, or forgot to mention earlier, one of the ways that we also tried to reduce the density, uh, within the project was capping the story on the apartment, uh, the garden apartments in the northwest corner of the development. Um, we have made a definitional commitment to cap that at three stories instead of going forward to just help protect the skyline. And as you mentioned earlier about some of the rental, um, concerns, you know, within the development, um, I can tell you right now that the conversations that we're having with our vertical build partners is all, all of these units will be owned, um, by the homeowner with the exception of the apartments. Uh, our vertical build partners that we're using are very much in the idea that they will sell it to owners and not to own it out. Um, but whether it be the apartments or the HOA, um, the HOA team and management team are all local people. They'll be heavily invested in, in being here, um, on a daily basis to make sure, um, that the entire development is held to a higher standard. Um, so, another thing that I wanted to touch on, um, is the trail system. Uh, Randall did a, a wonderful job describing the trail system. Um, I would just want to add to that, that again, going back to us trying to have that community within a community, we're going to do our very best. Um, the excavators that we have looking at this project, we have already heavily communicated to them as they go through their bid process, that we want to maintain the landscape to the best of our ability. Uh, there's a lot of trees that are on this development in certain areas that we are looking to keep, to incorporate that in the green space and into the trail system. Um, because our, our goal, and in one of the amenity maps that you have, uh, will demonstrate this, is that there are activity nodes built in these green spaces throughout the development that we want to put in additional fire pits. We get a couple of sections that offer enough square feet to put in a couple of additional pickleball courts, uh, dog parks, uh, you know, smaller amenity package playgrounds for kids throughout the development. And we believe that part of the appeal of that is maintaining the current landscape, um, and including the trees that are out there. There's some very old trees that in, in my mind are very eye appealing out there that, that we want to try to keep. And, uh, that entire trail system integrated together is approximately four miles a trail. Um, so that's going to give, in our opinion, plenty of opportunities for families to take walks, you know, ride their bikes, do different things, um, including the amenity park and the amenity nodes throughout the development. I did want to touch on a couple of things that, that have changed, I believe, since the last time that I stood, um, with you folks to describe this project, is on the western side, um, we are down to, uh, one entry exit on Farmer's Branch, I believe. Um, preliminarily, we had presented that there would be two, and working with OSRD in the city, uh, we've collapsed that down to one. And then also on the eastern side of the development, our entry exit off of Blue Stem was kind of in that dogleg corner right there. And for, um, different reasons, we've had to drop that back down to the south. So we're still have an entry exit on Blue Stem. It's just located in a little bit different spot, um, which, uh, put us in a position that we had to reconfigure from, I guess you would call it like a geometry standpoint, the layout of these lots. Um, we still were able to stay out of this flood zone detention area, um, which was very important. Um, and to kind of add to that, we have no intentions of applying for any type of special permits or doing anything, uh, to try to get in that, that flood zone. We just want to stay out because we know that there's a concern of flooding in that area already with development. And so, uh, we're just staying out of it. Um, and with all of those changes between moving the road and the, uh, adjustments of the floodplain, we still penciled this out that from a financial standpoint as developers, we can still make this work. Um, and then just a couple other things I wanted to touch on and, and see if there's any questions is, uh, the traffic study that was done on this, and we do have our representative from, or here from T E C, rather, um, if you, uh, folks have questions about the traffic study. But the traffic study that we had, um, performed on this development after all these changes suggests that the exterior road of the structure designs that we are doing, um, are above and beyond what's required. Um, we were taking Farmer's Branch three lanes, um, with an additional, uh, turn lane, left and right turn lane up against the development for three quarters of a mile that touches our property. Uh, we're also widening and putting in, um, culverts, uh, that are necessary to assist with the water runoff on Blue Stem, and then also widening Southern View to the north part of the development. Um, so anything regarding traffic concerns or additional water runoff from the, uh, from the development, we've tried to address the best that we possibly can by staying out of the flood zone and then really, um, going a little bit above and beyond what is called for in the traffic study. Um, and then the last big thing that I wanted to bring to everybody's, uh, attention from the last time that we met was, at that time, uh, we had not gotten a decision back from the Missouri Public Service Commission regarding the utility provider for this project. Um, matter of fact, we had to postpone and pull back our annexation application for that very reason. We thought that process was going to go faster. It didn't. But as of June 8th of this year, uh, the Public Service Commission approved a jurisdictional swap between Liberty Utilities and Ozark Electric for Ozark Electric to be the utility provider for this project, um, which was a huge win for us. And, and I can confidently say if that switch had not taken place, I would not be standing here talking to you. It would have killed the project. Um, what, uh, Ozark Electric has come to us, their excitement about the project and ways that they're going to help us get the infrastructure to this property to develop, um, was really a blessing. Cause like I said, if, if we would have been stuck with Liberty, we, we would not have been able to pull off this project. So I want to thank them, uh, for being such a huge partner in this. And then lastly, I did have an opportunity, um, to meet with Dr. Wilson and her team at the school. Um, I don't want to overly speak for Dr. Wilson, but she did give me, uh, the permission to stand before you folks and say that she had no concerns about the timing of this project or the size of this project. Um, I think before, when we were trying to squeeze this into a two or three-year project, there was some concern about could they take on that level of capacity on a full build out. But now that she's aware that this is a, you know, more than likely a five to seven, maybe even a 10-year project, um, she seemed to be very comfortable with the timing and, and the scope of the project. And so with that, I don't want to, again, overlap too much with what Randall gave you. I know there's a lot of detail and data here, but love to answer any questions you guys may have.
Alum Campbell, you're first.
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, you talked about the, uh, pick kids, I'm gonna say kids, not, it might not be the right word, kids starting out, you know, with a starter home and then progression through the development. And there wasn't much in mention, there wasn't much mentioned yet on the 55 plus, I think it's phase number eight. Uh, is that going to be a gated community, that portion of the, of the project?
Yeah, right now, the plan is for that to be gated. Um, matter of fact, it will have, um, the current plan is to have a micro HOA within the master HOA that is specific to the 55 and older community to give that area more of a, um, convenience and amenity with, between the gated fence and additional security, lawn care maintenance, trash service, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay.
But that would be right now, the only proposed area that would be gated. So the, a gated entry on the rest of the development is not proposed.
Okay, okay. Uh, the only other thing I was going to say is, uh, with the phasing going from west to east,
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that once you start getting the earlier phases done, that you'll make the east entrance more, more of a, I guess I'm saying the west entrance would not be a construction entrance. Once those phases get complete and you would start doing most construction entrance from the west, from east.
From just a, I mean, cause I envision that being more out of our pocket as developers on maintaining all of the, that traffic pounding on a nice road and entry that we built into. So as that phase ends, the idea is be, because again of emergency management in the construction entry, the Southern View exit to the north and south will be the most optimal in the beginning stages. But then as we start to get things going, yes, our idea is to open up the east side via Blue Stem and working with OSRD on what we need to do to accommodate that.
Okay.
Yeah. And there may be, quite honestly, in, a different option than that, and we won't know until we kind of get into it, working with OSRD on, you know, specific construction entrances and exits, as long as we maintain safety. Again, one of the reasons that we agreed to the three-lane, uh, traffic on Farmers, even though it was above me on this, is A, we needed to work with OSR to get this done, which was a challenge. It took several months to work that out with them. But also when, any idea that we were going to, um, increase a safety issue, Steve and I want to know part of that, right? I mean, we got young daughters that drive and there's a line of sight situation going on there. So I bring it all into the mix to say, even with the construction entry exit, if we need to do something different, working with OSRD, get everybody comfortable with that, we'll be open-minded to it.
Alum Yawal.
Yes, I, um, you were saying that some phases were, you were going to start first on and you were switching out. I didn't quite follow, follow that. What were you first going to be developing, did you say?
So the flow of this from, again, all of the utility partners, they would like for us to start right here. And so these phases, you've got phase one, two, and this right here is labeled five. But currently, we're having some internal discussions about switching five and three. And the reason for that is, is we're trying to get to the number four, which holds the larger amenity park with the pool. And so we're trying just to efficiently and effectively get to that area the best way possible because of the road of the structure it's going to take to get there, but also to make it really appealing for the residents that are there to get to that amenity park and want to use it. Because part of what I envision is if we don't do it that way, then this is almost kind of like a park out in the middle of a fescue field that doesn't have great eye appeal, or it's not developed enough for, to really get people out there and it justified. Because ultimately, what's got to take place beyond our capital injection is the HOA maintenance fees. And so for us to install those and people feel okay about it, we need to get them to that amenity park. And I just feel like if we go this way, it's going to delay being able to get here and then there.
Thank you. Um, and then I don't know if you followed my questions with Randall about the trails, and I just was stumbling over some wording in the PUD on pages nine and 10. The, the three plus miles of private trail, that is definitely part of the PUD?
Oh, yes.
That, that, okay.
All right.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Questions for? And I noticed on page 10 with amenities, you used the word shall with amenities be provided. I caught that. Cause it shall means you have to do it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a reason I bring, bring that up from previous experience, not with you all. So I do appreciate what you're doing with amenities. I mean, it's, that's going to be great for the citizens who move to this development.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you. Now I need to go. Okay, okay. At, at this time, again, we're on bill 3696. Anyone here from the public wish to speak for bill 3696? This is your time to come to the mic.
Kristen Hazeltine, Show Me Christian County Economic Development, 113 East Church Street. Um, good evening, Mayor, uh, and Board of Aldermen. Um, Show Me Christian County has been involved with this project since 2023. So not quite since the very beginning, but, um, we, we've been very involved, um, for, for almost two years now. So, um, I bring that up because we've seen several variations and challenges that the developer and the city have overcome together. And I, I do want to point out the collaboration and the partnership that has occurred behind the scenes. And I just, I feel like that is notable that they've really wanted to work together to get this project to this point. So, um, I also want to point out that there are two main items from an economic development organization from our perspective that is very positive and that we really want to highlight and feature as a big win for our community with this project. And that is both the diversity in housing and also the retail and commercial component for this plan. Uh, when it comes to housing, all of us know that there is a national shortage. Uh, locally, we hear this as well from our, uh, businesses and from our, um, even employees. Um, but we do hear about the lack of diversity in the housing inventory in southwest Missouri as well. Diverse housing impacts both employee attraction and retention. We feel this project will positively impact the need for housing and bring in more variety to the area as well. Um, on the commercial and retail component, um, he had mentioned that there were 10 acres that will be developed for retail and commercial. Um, just as a, a point of reference, the Ozark Marketplace where the, the development is, will take place up there by Walmart, that's 20 acres. And so in comparison, that's about half. So we should see a lot of sales tax generation that will be coming back to the city, um, to support the police park sewer and roads and all of what they do. So, um, we do look at that as another big win for our community as well. Um, so on behalf of the, uh, Show Me Christian County Board of Directors and our team, I ask that you approve both the PUD and the preliminary plat. So I don't come back up here and I'll keep it more brief. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else who would speak for bill number 3696? I have not seen movement. Anyone here who, who speak against bill 3696? This is your time to come to the mic. I have not seen movement, therefore, the, oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm a little confused. When you show the picture of the, of the thing, if you were to blow out like you were on Google map, what is to the north? Am I looking at a different project? Because the one, the, the one I looked at on, on the computer today, it showed that big quarry, right there.
To the north, to the north of, to the north of the development is Capitol Quarry.
It's Capitol Quarry. Okay. I just can't even imagine. I just can't even imagine it being a fit. And I just got to speak my meaning. A fit means that you look at it from the air and it looks beautiful. You look at this from the air and people are going to be going, why did you build it in the first place? There's so much other land. Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I tell you what, I can't believe people buy that. I know people are kind of hard-headed sometimes, but man, when it comes to the money situation that we're fixing to be in, or maybe our money might be out, you might get stuck thinking this is a good idea. Somebody like me's got to stand up and say, look at it from the air, people. It don't look like it's going to fly. It looks plump funny. I don't know enough about all this to, you know, have anything real fancy to say, because I know some of these people that have been involved in some of these projects have made some hellacious horrible mistakes. Green Bridge is a mess. Riverside Bridge is sinking. My name is Buddy Huggins, I'm a YouTuber. Look those two bridges up and look at the YouTube videos I got on them. We got to come together here and think about the road situation. Have y'all seen the traffic just over on the side going to McDonald's? Either the lights are out of sequence, or something horrible has changed. Because it takes a long time to get through there at 2:00.
Point of order, is this in relevance to what we're talking about?
Yeah, we're talking about, thank you, sir, Alton Campbell. We're here talking about the PUD and now you're changing subjects.
I'm talking about road traffic all the way around.
We need to be talking about regarding the PUB that we're.
All that traffic has to spill right back out on everybody trying to go home and go somewhere. It's just a bad place to build for me.
Thank you for your comments, sir, appreciate it. Okay, I'll ask one more time, anyone opposed to bill number 3696? Okay, at this time, the public hearing for bill number 3696 is now closed and will be held up to a future meeting. Are we all still good? Okay, so we're now to draw attention to bill number 3697.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3697 on its first reading by title and brief description only.
Second. The motion is that we place bill number 3697 on its first reading by title only. That was made by Alderman Metcalf, it was seconded by Alderman Campbell. On the favor of voting on the motion to discuss bill number 3697, do so by show of hands, and that does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat for the Marabella subdivision and authorizing the Director of Planning and Development to accept the dedication of the public streets and easements to the city as shown on the preliminary plat upon the applicant filing and recording a final plat that substantially conforms to the preliminary plat, and authorizing the city clerk to sign the final plat upon compliance with the terms of this ordinance.
Okay, the public hearing now for bill number 3697 is now open, and we'll head back our Director Randall Whitman.
Thank you. So this is the, this is the final phase of our three-part presentation on Marabella. This is a, speaking to the preliminary plat. So we've talked about annexing 230 acres, zoning 230 acres, and this speaks to plating 230 acres. So just like in any subdivision, big or small, we go through a process of, of presenting a preliminary plat. Staff looks at the development of public improvement plans, and then there's a final plat that actually creates the lots that are sold and homes are built, so we're moving forward to that portion of it. This is a, a look at the preliminary plat as it was presented. They are preliminary plating the entire 230 acres. There's 543 lots shown on that plat. That includes seven detention areas. 539 of those lots are residential, some of which are single-family, some of them are multifamily. The lot in the, this lot is a multifamily lot, this is a commercial lot, this is a commercial lot, this is a multifamily lot, and the rest of these are single-family. This lot, as Michael spoke to, has the opportunity to be diverse housing and they have the, within the zoning, can, can mix their zoning up as they go along. At this time, it's just shown as lots, and that's what we're looking at. They can build patio homes on there, or single-family homes, that kind of looks back at the zoning rather than the plating of the property. But overall, there's 15 phases to the subdivision, so you could look at this as 18 subdivisions kind of rolled into one. He, he spoke to the timeline far better than I could. I think that's, it's going to be tough to see how that evolves. The phasing of this, he, I'm glad he covered that, we'll just leave it at that. We did look at this from a staff standpoint, that we wanted to make sure that the roads were adequately built as development went along, so that we tried to minimize the impact on people who do live there as future phases are constructed. We looked very closely at when the amenities would get built, so that they were in place to kind of mirror the city's existing ordinances, or the ordinances you've adopted that require swimming pools at a certain threshold of a residential development. And I'll add that some of these districts coincide with our existing districts. I think we talked about that earlier. But the developer, Michael Roberts and Ferreras, agreed to apply that standard to across the project. So they're providing amenities whether they had to or not. They didn't have to do this, but they stepped up and, and did that through the trails, the swimming pools, the, all the other things. So I think there's some credit to be given for that. And as I said, by phase four, the yellow phase, they will have enough, if you were to apply that standard, there will be enough lots constructed to, to warrant those amenities, and they will have to build those as part of the public improvement phase. So that, that caveat at the bottom, there will be some opportunity for them to change or look at how they diversify their housing and their building types. The lots they've proposed are what's on the preliminary plat, and that's what we're asking you all to approve. Any deviation from that, I think the language in here is significant deviation, and we will look at that. Does it change the dynamics of how the improvements and things impact the overall, the overall development and the phasing? Staff does have some authority within the PD to approve that without bringing it back to the commission or the board, but we'll use our best discretion to evaluate that as it comes. The trail on the south side of the property is part of the Trails Master Plan. They've agreed to build that alongside or within a 30-foot trail easement. There's existing water and sewer adjacent to the property, as we've said. Any off-site extensions or utilities will be at their expense. The improvements required on the adjacent roadways that are identified through the traffic study, as Michael said, are at their expense. Any deviations and major deviations in the way they are plating or planning to develop the property may require them to come back and re, take a second look at the stormwater and traffic analysis. But at this point, it's been, it's based on that preliminary plat, and that's what it's been approved. And as I said, the next step would be to submit public improvement plans on phase one or phase two, however they proceed. And once those improvements or plans are approved, the construction is completed, and then the city would administratively, could administratively approve final plat, creating those lots. I went through that pretty class, pretty quick. I can go back and show the preliminary plat, but other than that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this again in September. Staff supports their recommendation and be glad to answer any final questions.
I, no, I'm not seeing any questions. Oh, yes, excuse me.
At which point in the process does the fire department look at the emergency or the access points?
They have looked at it as part of the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Does the developer have any further comments? Okay, okay, at that time, anyone here from the public wish to speak for bill 3697? This is your time. This is if you would speak for bill 3697. Okay, I'm not seeing movement. Anyone here would speak against bill 3697? I'm not seeing movements, therefore, the public hearing for bill 3697 is now closed, and it'll be, this bill will be held up for a future meeting. Now we're going to move on to our first readings, which we have two bills for this. The first one is bill number 3698.
Your Honor, it is my duty to place bill number 3698 about fees on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, so we have bill number 3698 on its first reading, and that motion was made by Alderman Galloway, it was seconded by Alderman Snyder, on the favor of voting on the motion to discuss bill 3698, do so by show of hands, and that does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, adopting the 2026 Fee Study, establishing certain city fees.
And I believe actually the administrator is going to be speaking to this.
Yes, Your Honor, before you tonight is the annual fee study, and if approved by the Board, these fees will go into effect January 1, 2026. The municipal code of Ozark was amended in 2018 to allow annual review and establishment of these fees, and this process tonight is consistent with what was adopted in 2018. These fees are consistent with fees approved by the Board of Aldermen in previous years, and they are set forth by the municipal code and are intended to recoup, recoup the cost of providing the services. These are not profit-generating fees, these are cost-recovery fees. The departments that reviewed fees include the city clerk, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Development, Public Works, and Police, and a majority of these fees before you tonight relate specifically to, to Parks and Recreation, Planning and Public Works. There are a total of, there are approximately 251 total fees that were reviewed. Parks makes up approximately 144 of these fees. Planning and Public Works makes up 98 total fees, and there are two new fees being recommended in this proposal, and those are in the Planning Department and relate to a zoning verification letter and a buffer yard variance. Eighty percent of the fees that you have before you tonight are recommended to increase, and the, they are proposed to increase between 5% and 7% on average. Twenty percent of the fees that are before you are either remaining the same, remaining the same or decreasing. And in summary, the annual review of fees is consistent with the municipal code as adopted in 2018. These fees are consistent with the practice of cost recovery. Average increase ranges from 5% to 7%, and if, if approved, they will go into effect January 1, 2026. We are, the team of your Parks and Rec Director, your Planning Director, and your Public Works are prepared to respond to any questions that you may have as you dive into this information. I don't have anything else to offer.
Questions from our Board? Yes, Alderman Aiken.
Mr. Minister, could you, since you did mention there are two new fees, could you mention or just briefly explain what those are?
I'm going to defer to Randall Whitman to explain that.
Yes, there is the buffer yard variance and a zoning verification letter. There is a provision in our zoning code for circumstances when a developer can't meet the exact 25 feet, 30 feet, or 15 feet in a buffer yard if there's geometry issues on a parcel. They can process, they can basically ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to reduce that buffer yard and add additional bushes and things to kind of mitigate that friction. But it does require staff time, it requires publication, things like that, and taking it before the commission for them to review. I'm not, good, good question as to when that was added to the zoning code, I would have to ask Cameron, maybe that question if you want to know. The other, the other fee that's added is a zoning verification letter, and it's not uncommon for a lender or financier to want to know or verify that the city write a letter certifying that a property is zoned a certain zoning district and it's qualified for that particular use, just to make sure there's no issues. So there's some staff time involved in doing the research and drafting that letter, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the Board? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Okay, anyone here tonight wishing to speak regarding bill 3698 from the audience, this is your time.
Jeanne McFaul, 1324 East Warren Avenue. I just have a question. It seems like the annexation is high. It goes from 351 to 520, and if you're doing a zoning change at the same time, then will you have to pay the other, let's see, $728 on top of that, just to hook to city sewer in the city limits of Ozark because you need it? So that's expensive in itself, let alone an annexation and a zoning.
We will get those questions addressed to you later. Okay, we'll make note of that. Anyone else would speak regarding bill 3698? Okay, not seeing any. Bill number 369 will be held up for a future meeting. Now I would draw attention to bill number 3699.
Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3699 on its first reading by title only.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is place bill number 3699 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Galloway, seconded by Alderman Aiken. On the favor of voting on the motion to discuss bill 3699, do so by show of hands, and that does carry.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding among the City of Ozark, Missouri, Genesis Realty and Development LLC, and Southwest Missouri Baseball Properties LLC, relating to the development of the Ozark Mountain Sports Complex project.
And our, tonight, our stat comments will be led to by Sarah Granath, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Sarah Granath with Gilmore and Bell, it's nice to see you all again. And tonight, I'm actually going to turn it over first to the developer team to make kind of an overview presentation of the project, and then we'll get into the incentive side and the memorandum of understanding. But I think it'll help to get a better understanding of the project, it's been a little bit before we've been up here, before you all. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Kurt Peterson.
Your Honor, good evening, Aldermen, good evening. My name is Kurt Peterson, here on behalf of the developers. I'm assisting them with their financing of this project. I will say as a quick aside that I get the opportunity to work all over the great state of Missouri on many different types of real estate projects, and there's just nothing folks are hunger, hungrier for than sports and entertainment and sort of tourist attraction sort of projects like this, so I'm thrilled about it. I'll also say as a club baseball coach with five kids, four of which are boys that play baseball, I'm a full-time driver to tournaments, to out of town, all over the place. My legal job is my, my part-time job. I see really firsthand, as you walk around at these tournaments, what economic drivers they are. So that's just my little personal aside, but again, it's an understatement to say I'm thrilled that I've worked with these guys for about a year now on this project. So tonight, as every good presentation hopefully has, quick overview, just four points before we're here, as long as you want with questions, but talk about the developer, the project site, the project itself, and then lastly, really the, the core substance of the MOU, which is the economic incentives. So starting with, starting with the developers, there's two developers. The lead developer is the sports developer, and I know Matt Goforth, who is, if technology works, is right now listening to us virtual. He couldn't, couldn't get here tonight, but then Dustin Lewis, sitting here beside me, who you know, is another principal of SWMO Baseball Properties LLC, that's the actual entity, that's the developer. I know they've been in front of you a number of times. And then the other developer they've selected, because they're the lead developer for the hotel, is Genesis Realty and Development. When I say developers, those are the two that I'm referring here tonight, and they're the parties to the proposed MOU. I don't intend to read all this that I have on the slides, but as you're going to see, there's a lot of experience from both the sports side and the hospitality or the hotel side. I'll put a few images up, too. You can see some of the illustrative projects that the sports developer's been a part of, a few pictures. And I know Matt and Dustin have been before you before, so you don't need to give a full bio. Couple more pictures. And the whole point of that is just to remind, maybe even folks that are listening or watching that don't know them, that these are people that have a lot of experience with exactly this type of project, and we're all to take great comfort that they know what they're doing and know what they would do here. Next, the project site. Again, something most everyone knows, but being friendly to listeners. Again, something most everyone knows, but being friendly to listeners or folks that haven't heard about this project yet. This is located, again, right next to the Ozark Mountain Sports Complex that exists today. You can see the dark outline around it. We're just east of 65, south of J, the east west road or highway to the north. The next piece is a little bit, again, you've heard a lot about this. But given that there's an MOU before you tonight, I think it's good to hear the specifics about what's proposed for the project. And so again, if virtual is working, I think Matt is going to give us a quick reminder about the project. Then I'll come right back up and talk about the proposed public incentives. And if not, Dustin, is Matt intending to do it? Let's see, are we good?
Hi, everybody. Can you see me?
We hear you. We hear you.
Great. Well, hopefully we can get me on camera there as well. Greetings and salutations, Mayor Alderman. Thanks for having us again this evening. We are so excited to have reached this threshold with our development and in partnership with you guys there at the city. As we've talked about many times, this has been a vision of ours for quite some time to create a destination for the region and for the area and for youth sports to generate jobs and to generate opportunity and impact for the community and the city and for the entire area. And so we're here with you again tonight as we begin to continue to push this thing forward. Kurt, we thank you so very much for all of your work and your firm's work with us. And we're just excited to continue to move forward on this development and the pieces that are to be included within this phase as we talk about it here a little bit more in depth with regards to the fields and the hotel and the new training facility that we plan to bring. And we're just very excited to continue to move forward on this, to bring this this opportunity to the area and this economic driver for the region. So thank you so very much. And Kurt, I'll yield back to you, sir.
You're good. Did you plan a joke on me? There we go. And those are some of the specifics that, again, we don't want to belabor it because I know these are all known to you. But these are some of the specifics that Matt was alluding to regarding the training facility, the new fields, the public walking trail, and the hotel. A little bit of sense of budget, a little over $38 million is where we're at right now. And then the timeline. Is that the blank one? I think that was actually the site plan, but that was a technology issue. So we'll skip to the last piece, the part that is nearest and dearest to my heart, given that I'm a finance person. There are, to make this project financially feasible, there are four specific tools that are being proposed. And this becomes the heart of the MOU that Sarah will talk about in great detail in a minute. The four tools are Chapter 100, Community Improvement District, CID, Transportation Development District, TDD, and then City Sales Tax Sharing. So those are four pieces. So just very briefly, I want to give a slide on each one, just to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what's being proposed. Is this one of those fake ones where you make me feel like I'm doing it? No, you're doing great. That's perfect. The first of the four tools is Chapter 100. Chapter 100, what's being proposed is really two benefits that come along with that. One is you're able to build your project without having to pay Missouri sales and use tax, which can be, it's a big savings for a project at the very beginning, a good shot in the arm. The other piece that comes with Chapter 100 is a real property tax abatement. And what's proposed is a 25-year, 100% property tax abatement. But there's two details that need to be highlighted beyond just that main label. The first is that the hotel site will continue to pay current existing taxes on the underlying land. So that would not change. That we call that the base sometimes. The base would stay in place. It's only the hotel that gets built on top that would be abated. The other point worth raising, sort of a nuance, is that the existing training facility, the one that they've outgrown and they're built bigger and better, will still remain and function. And that will actually, there's no request for real property tax abatement on that. That will continue to be on the tax rules as is. So overall, the 25-year Chapter 100 request is imperative as it sets the project up really just foundationally for viability and success for the long term. That's tool one. Tool two is the CID, the Community Improvement District. And in short, that proposes an additional Missouri sales and use tax of 1% that would be charged only within this project, nowhere outside, only if you visit it. There wouldn't be any special assessments or anything like that. And the Missouri statute, typically this is what we do, allows us to go up to 27 years or until the project costs are identified or reimbursed. Tool number three is almost identical, just has a different name, the statute, Transportation Development District. It means you focus your funds on parking or car-focused transportation elements. Also, a 1% add-on sales tax only applies to people, again, that visit the project and choose to come there and spend their money. And has a 25-year term, a little different statute than CID in that respect. And then lastly, is the city sales tax sharing, which is requested for 10 years. It would ask that the city's 1% general sales tax, only on new sales, new sales, incremental sales as we call them, at the project would receive that sharing from the city. So that, again, is quick because we can slow down and go to any of those that you'd like to delve deeper into. But it gives a good, I think, overview of the four tools that are requested that can make this project happen. One tool, I forgot the last tool. This is something I wanted to bring up because sometimes this can cause confusion. So if this gets support and moves forward and we get into the, with Sarah and Gilmore and Bell, all the documentation that makes this a reality, a blight finding will have to be, under statute, will have to be found for the city sales tax sharing. And I just wanted to make a note that blight, sometimes when people hear that, they think of, this is my terminology, Webster's dictionary blight, and you think, whoa, 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 I don't even think I have any blight in my city or what have you. But really, it's a very specific legal definition for economic development, which, again, in a blight study that will be authored and submitted to the board, this will all be spelled out. But I almost wanted to get it out now in case there was early questions about it because it's fundamental. You can't do that last important tool unless ultimately this board, after presented with the facts and the study, analysis from the city's attorney, make that finding. But most of all, I just want to say, when it comes down to it, what the study will show, because we know the site very well, is it's not being utilized up to its highest and best use, either for the city, from a taxation standpoint, for residents, for use, or really for any of the taxing jurisdictions. It's not its highest and best used. Anyway, that will be unpacked more in blight study. But I wanted to put it on your radar in case we wanted to have any discussion about it tonight. Those are the four tools. Last element to bring up that you've heard about is, you can see on the screen, the about six acre hat, black hashed eastern boundary of the project, which we all know, the city actually owns that property, and there's detention there today. So what's being proposed as part of this overall economic development partnership would be that the city would convey that, part of the ball fields would utilize it. And then we would put back a bigger and better regional detention that would actually leave it better off for everybody than we found it, and we would pay for those improvements. So we hope tonight that we do receive your support for the MOU. It will then give the developers the confidence to immediately spend the time and money needed to, again, go through the actual process, all the documentation, all the pieces of paper. And then once Matt knows and Dustin knows that these essential public-private incentives are a go, if you will, he plans to start immediately. In fact, I keep joking with him. I mean, again, you can tell these are essential. But the moment they go, he wants to start yesterday or two days before yesterday. And then I actually asked the administrator about this. There's been no discussion about this in the past, and this is not a hard ask. But given what I just said, I'm tagging on to what I did prepare to say, which is Matt wants this done yesterday. He would like to do it. Is that if it's, if we're able to expedite tonight, we didn't ask for it before, we would ask for that now. But I wouldn't at all, if that causes pupil consternation, don't worry about it. He just wants to go, go, go. That's the bottom line. So, Your Honor, that's all I have for you. But we'd love to answer questions now or after Sarah comes up and speaks.
As per your request, this is a lot of information. And I'm not in favor of expediting this tonight. I want time to think about it and process it.
Yes, sir. Like I said, that's a soft, a soft ask from a developer that's really excited.
Okay, because I mean, this is a lot of information.
It's a lot of information. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, and Kurt's not leaving, so you can always ask him more questions after this. But I just want to take a minute now to kind of orient you where we are in this process. So you will get probably very tired of hearing me and the developers talk about this project over the coming months. But we had step one back, I believe it was April or May, we did the funding agreement, right? And so that was kind of your first, your first take at this of approval of staff and then also my time moving forward with the developer. This is what I'll call step two of a many, many step process. Okay, so this is the memorandum of understanding. The next step would be that we would start engaging Baker Tilly, right, to do the but for analysis. And then there's consideration of each incentive as you move along. But at this step tonight, the memorandum of understanding, this is a framework for staff, for city consultants like myself and the financial analysts and the developer team to begin work and nailing down details on these specific incentive requests. This agreement, this memorandum of understanding, does not bind the city to any future action. It does not bind you to approving any incentives. It simply, like I said, provides a framework for us to move forward and start working out details and spending our time and ultimately developers' money. But as you can see, the citizens' money in tax benefits. So as I mentioned, the next step would be a but for test that, as you've agreed to in the funding agreement, and I think we've all established, is probably a good step for incentives in the city is to engage Baker Tilly as the financial analyst to go forward, evaluate the developer's information they're providing, kind of, does that reflect reality? What does that mean? Is the but for standard that is in your economic development policy, is that met here? And at what level is that met with these incentives? And so that's really going to be the next step if you should move forward with this MOU. And then I also want to highlight in the MOU, it's in there, it's also in the explanation sheet that was along with the ordinance, that the Chapter 100 request that Kurt mentioned is outside of the economic development policy that's been adopted by the city. And so that's one of those items we'll really want to key in on, right? When we have the but for analysis, that's going to help. It's going to give you all the information you need to make an educated decision and judgment on that incentive request. But staff and I understand that that is outside of the policy. So we did want to make sure we're acknowledging that tonight. But again, that will, the but for analysis and the kind of coming work will help inform you all on decisions with each incentive moving forward. I do expect that they will move at different times. There's different statutory requirements for notices and documents that have to be sent out. And so this is kind of our, you know, our one time that we're going to do a big overview of all of the pieces, get a good framework, and then we'll start moving forward on each piece individually. You'll see them at different times if we should move forward. I am also happy to answer any questions. I know we've, obviously, we've done a CID recently. The TDD does function very similarly to that. There's just different allowable costs. They have to all be transportation-related. Chapter 100, I'm not sure if you all have done that at all recently. I know not in the recent, recent past. So I'm happy to talk about how that works and the city's shared sales tax and/or the land conveyance. If there's any specific questions on that, again, you will get full overviews and explanations of this from me in the future. But happy to answer any kind of preliminary questions tonight if you'd like to discuss this.
Alden Aiken first.
I just wanted to say I'm very excited about the project. I know that citizens of Ozark are excited about making use of the ball field. So I'm very grateful that these discussions are moving forward. The, your fees, I think, are paid for by the developer.
Correct.
So it's important.
Yes, that's the funding agreement.
So it's important for citizens to understand that there are no tax dollars spent on this. And then you've already referenced the abatement policy, which has been in practice for years and last, used with the last major development that I think you were helping the city with. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Alden Campbell.
I'm in favor of the project, too, and I'm excited about it. I'm going to count on you to convince or educate me on the blighting part of this. Okay? Also have some concern on, I need to learn more about the city sales tax sharing part of it. And the city land conveyance, I'm not real hung up on, but I need to learn some more about that, too.
Okay.
Not tonight.
Okay, I was going to say, I can dive in. It's only, it's not even nine o'clock yet. I can dive in if you'd like.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're good right now. Okay, is anyone here from the public who is to speak regarding Bill number 3699? This is your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Just to keep it brief, this is, again, was mentioned that this is just the next step in the long process. And all of you guys are very aware that we are very excited and supportive of this project. So we just ask that you move this and continue it on and approve this soon. So thank you.
Anyone else? Which speak regarding Bill 3699? Okay, if not, now, Bill number 3699 would be held for a future meeting. Now, there's no resolutions at this time. We're going to go to our reports, and we could begin with our city administrator.
Yes, sir. We have several reports tonight, so I will be brief. Just a quick reminder that tomorrow night from 5:30 to 6:30, we have another educational and informational session here in the council chambers to discuss a charter city form of government. We held one of these last week, and I believe we had 16 individuals from the public attend that. And I believe to date, we have officially received one signed petition. We're hoping that we receive more and that people are working on those. But that will be tomorrow night here in the council chambers from 5:30 to 6:30. That's all I have to report at this time. Very excited about the other reports that are forthcoming.
Any questions for our city administrator? Okay, moving on to our financial department. We have the media report from Mary Edna Wilson.
I think I gave all of you a copy of the, it's at least pretty.
Yes.
This is a six-month financial report. So it kind of shows a few different things. At the beginning of the year, our 25 budget, we had a total available funds of $60 million. Thirty-four point nine of those were new revenues coming in. Twenty-five were, was carryover we projected from the previous year. We only wound up with 21.6. So we were a little, little bit less than what we had projected. At the end of six months, we have 25 million available funds available. We're projected to have 14.4. Those additional funds will cover that where we've only spent 32% of our projected budget. That's where those $25 million in funds will go, is to bring that up to whatever percentage we wind up spending. A lot of that, the difference between 50% and 32% is due to projects and grants that we've not gotten reimbursement for, but will once the work's done and the invoices are turned in and paid. I know the OC had a HVAC project that we've paid for since the end of June. So that was a big expense. And it's not allocated like, as your light bill is every month. It's a one-time type expense. And revenue as well for grants, it's a one-time reimbursement or revenue to us once the project is, that work is done. We get it at one time as opposed to equal increments. The general fund is slow as well this year. We projected a total of 15 million in revenues, 12 million in carryover. And we've only received 37%. But it's the same thing. The street fund has ongoing projects. The overlay project has just been finished. And in fact, I think is still to be done some. So once those projects are done, we'll spend that money. So the Chadwick Flyer project is in there, and we all know that it's continuing. And there are big expenses with that, and that's big revenue to us when we get the reimbursement. Sales tax is about the same as it was last year. We have 4.9 million budgeted for 25 to be received. And we have, at the end of June, we'd receive 47% of that, or $2.3 million. Last year, at the end of six months, we have received 101% of what we had received in 2024 at the same time. So we've received just a little bit more through the end of June than we had received last year. So it's pretty, it's just really flat. We, I think we'll make what we budgeted, but we won't make more than that for sure. So overall, they're, the city's largest funds, the Stormwater General Fund and Water Fund, are slightly ahead of expectations compared to the same ahead of expectations compared to the same period last year. This is due to stable revenues and moderate spending for the first two quarters. And as I've said, we expect to spend more in the last six months. Our fund balance is 14, we projected 14 million. And again, we have 25 million. That's money that'll be there to pay those expenses that we haven't paid yet. So in summary, 2025 is getting a slower start, generating revenues and budgeted. The city fund balances remain healthy with cash reserves covering six of eight months of operating expenses. Sales tax revenues are stable compared to the prior period, but show little to no growth. All nine funds through June of '25, the city has received 52% of the annual budgeted revenue and spent 32% of the budgeted expenses. This report only reflects a mid-year review of the financial activity of 2025. The 2026 budget is being worked on, is expected to be presented for the first reading on November the 17th at the, your board meeting on that night. I look forward to continuing to work with you and for you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
No doubt question, Alden Campbell.
I don't know if I'm on the right track here. But remind me what the auditor had said as it relates to the amount of cash reserves. How many months is good?
Somewhere between six and nine months of reserves is ideal.
Okay.
So we like to maintain that.
So if we got below six, we would start sweating a little bit? Is that accurate?
No, that we'd start sweating. We would have to evaluate why we would drop below that number.
Okay.
There could be some event that caused that that we had to take care of. Depends on which fund it is. The water fund is, might have an unexpected expense. But we've not had that experience. So hopefully, we don't have to do that. But we would certainly address it if we see that balance dropping low.
Okay, thank you.
Alden Camp, excuse me, Alden Galloway.
I just wanted to compliment you on your report, quality of it. It's easy to read, your explanations, and even garnering questions from board members about our finances six months in. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now move on to our Parks and Recreation and Director Hayden.
Good evening. This evening, you see before you your Parks and Recreation report. I won't add too much, other than the fact that I do want to highlight that we are in the middle of our community feedback for our Parks Master Plan. We started that really with the craft fair on October 3. They were out there. And of course, we expect to see at that event, and I've not seen actual numbers just yet, but somewhere between 30,000 to 50,000 people over the course of that weekend. We wanted to tap into that. If you all would, whenever you all get the chance, make sure you're spreading the word to your constituents, to anyone who would like to have a say as we look at the future of Ozark Parks and Recreation. I even have some of our little QR business cards, QR code business cards, that you all are welcome to take some to help get that word out, to share. And we can, of course, get more for you as well. It's very important that the public's voice is heard in this process. But beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the report or the master planning process.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then we'll welcome back our Randall Whitman. Again, you've been on the floor a lot tonight.
That's all right. I'm the last thing on the agenda, right? In addition to the report, I'd like to share with you that the Planning, Zoning Commission does have a meeting on the 27th. There's nine items. There's four items for James Gerber Assembly, the annexation and three zoning requests for the property just on the, just on Farmer's Branch on the east side of their campus. There's a zoning, there's an annexation and a conditional overlay request for the Bingham Project. We have the annexation of 17th Street, adjacent to Ozark Marketplace, and of course, the ordinance amendments that we spoke about in our non-legislative meetings. So other than that, and what's in my report, any questions?
Nothing. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any final comments from the Aldermen? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
A motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion for adjournment made by Alderman Metcalf, same old Snyder, on the favor of voting motion for adjournment, do so by show of hands. And it does carry. And we stand adjourned.